It is five o'clock PM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna go around the room and introduce ourselves. Joe?
Joe Aikstead, City Engineer.
Nick Dooms, Assistant City Engineer.
Ryan Austin, District One Alderman.
Tom Rome, District Four Alderman.
Matt Zachar, District Three Alderman.
Sherri Evansen, District Five.
Janice Pollak, Ward Six.
Patrick Delaney, District Seven Alderman.
Jay Bemke, District Eight.
Shane Blazer, Mayor.
Thank you. So, there's one item on the agenda today, and that's to review the, and discuss the rail feasibility study. So, that'll be doing discussion on tonight, and I think I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Aikstead.
So, I can start us off with a quick introduction to the report and a little bit of background on it. You know, highlights and findings and things that maybe can start the discussion off. So, Patrick, engineering in conjunction with Link Things, you know, put the, put the study together. They started off with an executive summary, and they do have, they have a recommendation in there. The recommendation provides everything that the city would be looking for. You know, it'd cover all the bases. So, it's also, you know, an expensive option. Some of the noteworthy items that came out of the study, some of which are intuitive and things that, that we knew or the community knew. But nevertheless, the crossing with the biggest impact was at West Grand Avenue. Both for blockages largely due to the fact that their daily traffic volumes are approaching 12,000 vehicles a day. In addition, crossings are blocked on average about eight minutes, but can be up to an hour at times. Probably the most noteworthy item that came out of the data gathering phase of the project was that when a train does come through town, the crossings at Gainer Avenue and Grand Avenue are only blocked simultaneously 0.1% of the time, at least for the data that was collected in the study. So, meaning that if it's blocked at one of those crossings, it's open at the other 99% of the time. And in addition, most of the blockings, blocked crossings that do occur are due to the switching operations of the rail yard, which are just north of Fremont Street. Otherwise, the through trains, those don't create too much of a, of a blocking issue because they keep moving and, and just get through the crossing. From, from the study, they also did a survey. They had a thousand-plus responses over the, the month-long period. From the survey, there were, there were four issues that were noted. The top three issues, number one, congestion delays. They have an impact cost that they assign to it based on some assumptions of $5.5 million to the, to the community or the area per year. Issue number two was safety, with six to 12 emergency vehicles blocked each year, and 33 accidents involving rail and vehicles over the past 10 years. That, that associative impact cost was $2 million per year. And then the third issue was noise complaints. The report lists, they, they put a matrix together, pros and cons. They list a bunch of the alternatives that came out of the study, ranging from, you know, just kind of the very low end, low-hanging fruit of talking with CN and, and maybe making some, convincing them of making some operational changes. There's also some, including technology with predictive mobility. That's, that's a setup that, that Link Things is involved with and, and can provide. There's also intersection modifications, track relocations, grade separations, and then, of course, the quiet zone piece of it. And with the alternatives, there could be any, any one of them, or it could be any combination of them. If there's significant interest in resolving some of the delay issues with physical improvements, that may also lend itself towards more easily getting a quiet zone. And then, of course, the technology option could be deployed and utilized to help vehicles navigate around the close crossings and, you know, without having to do physical improvements at intersections. So, that's kind of the, just a brush over of the report. Hopefully, everybody received the report and had a chance to glance through it.
Do you have an extra copy of that? My email hasn't worked since Monday. And, uh, and somebody took the paperwork here, so.
Any questions?
Joe, can you go over the predictive mobility? Kind of give us a rundown of what that type of system looks like and what the advantages would be?
Sure. So, initially here, I'll maybe just scroll through the report and get to the alternatives page just so you can see that option compared to some of the other options. So, there's a few different predictive, few different technology-related options, all involving different levels of the same predictive mobility setup, but ranging from roughly 52,000 up to 375,000 for a full technology option. So, Link Things, this is their kind of proprietary system. They did the data gathering for the report, and they've got a variety of sensors that they utilize along the tracks, basically to find out, okay, well, where's, where's, where's the train at? What crossings are blocked? And where's the train heading? What's its speed? And then, based on the, the crossings downstream of that train, basically identifying to a user that, hey, this, this crossing will be blocked, or is blocked, you know, use this other route. So, I've got a bunch of information back from Link Things just in the last couple of days with a variety of different questions about, you know, how long they've been in business? How many deployments or systems do they have in operation? And then ones that they have kind of in the queue and actively working on deploying. And so, they've been in business for four years. They've, they've been featured in the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. That's how I became aware of them. And both Fond du Lac and Waukesha, they're both, they're two of four cities that are currently using it. I'm not sure that they have any currently rolled out to the general public, but that's, that's coming. They've got deployments in Milwaukee and Janesville that will be not only available to, like, emergency departments and, and protective services, but to the general public to get, get around crossings. They also have, you know, I talked to them about, you know, implementation, and how long that, you know, a system might take to deploy or get ready and deploy, and then about the reliability of the system. The implementation is not, not anything unheard of. You know, six to 12 weeks is the, the general response that I got. Reliability, they have over 50 devices that they've put together, with zero of the 25 deployed devices requiring any repairs to date. So, obviously, with anything technology, that's always a big concern is, is, well, how, how robust is the equipment? You know, what's the sort of annual operating cost to keep it maintained and operational? With any of the pricings that they provided in the alternative section, those come with three years of maintenance costs. And then they've, they've contracted with Tapco, which is our current traffic signal provider that we use for both service and, technical service and equipment supplies. So, there, that company is well-equipped to, to do maintenance and be able to both supply and service the equipment. But, so, on the graphic here, my, not, you can't see my screen. Let's try this again. There we go. So, they have both roadside signage options. So, at key locations, vehicles that are using major roadways could be noticed of, hey, the, the crossing at Grand Avenue is currently blocked. And perhaps they are made aware of that as they cross the expressway bridge, for instance. They could be diverted on Second Avenue. They could decide to turn that way if they, if they chose to and go down to Gainer Avenue and cross. So, this, this image on the left-hand side of the screen, that's kind of what the view would look like to a user if they had it on their, their smartphone or tablet. Otherwise, I've got a picture of possible roadside signage. Would look something like the one on the right side of the screen there. So, they kind of did analysis in the report, in the study. You know, if, if any of the, the major crossings are blocked, you know, what's the alternative routes? And what are the drive times of those routes? And they were just about four, four minutes in any direction. So, if, if a vehicle chose to try to get around a crossing, they'd be looking at four minutes. The advantage is, is that they, they could keep moving rather than queuing up and waiting for eight minutes or 20 minutes or whatever the case might be.
And again, you said the, the app or the version that would be issued to the public is still in the works. It's not anything that's doable at, at the current time?
Nope. The, the app is available both in Android and Windows version. And then the Apple iOS version is coming out in the next couple of weeks. So, that's, that's currently available. They don't have any current, any deployments currently that are open to the, to the general public. But they have two of them that are in the works, one in Janesville and then one in Milwaukee.
Thank you. I guess I have another one here. Alternate three, the intersection modification. It's brought up about extending the left turn lane on Northbound 13. You wanna give us your opinion on that?
Sure. So, it's a, it's a, I guess, a less expensive option. This is, zoom in here so you can see it better. So, this is, this is the alternate essentially where they would, we'd extend the left turn lane on Northbound Expressway. And it provides, provides some extra queuing space for vehicles that are, are waiting for a blocked crossing to, to open up so they can continue to, to keep moving. The major issue right now is that, once the queuing starts, it quickly fills up that left turn lane. Traffic starts to spill out in the through lane, and now it starts to, you know, back up through traffic to an extent. There's still the outside through lane that, that vehicles can use. This particular option, even though we could extend it, and it's, it is a cheaper cost compared to some of the alternatives, I don't, I don't know that it would result in significant benefits for delays.
Can you go into any kind of grant financing that would be available for the, you know, 30-plus million-dollar jobs?
So, with the 30-plus million-dollar jobs, a couple of the, just a couple of quick points on those before jumping into the grants. But being that they're, they're of such a significant nature, grant dollars would be certainly a priority. But in addition to that, the, the overpass, underpass option, we would certainly need DOT support on that. They would have to initiate or run that project, being that it's connecting highway and of that size of, of an improvement. If it's one of the 30-plus million, that's a track relocation that's outside the city, that's, that's the big issue there is it's outside of the city. It involves other, other local governments, townships, Wood County perhaps, and, and of course, the DOT and railroad support. But there are grant opportunities, some of these that, I mean, there's a carbon reduction one. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, that funding option at all. But the underserved communities, that, that could be an option that was identified in the, in the report, primarily due to the, the average annual salary that's reported for the west side of town. There is, there is safety money, the Highway Safety Improvement Program that wasn't specifically identified in the report, I don't think. Although that's, that is a grant that we're using for the signal infrastructure improvements related to the, to the rail interconnect, rail preemption that we have along the expressway. So, that could be an option. The likelihood of receiving funding, I guess, is always, always a question mark, but.
So, how, I mean, in order for us to pursue any of those, how would we start learning more about the opportunities that are available? Because we can't really talk about them if we don't know something more than what they've taught us.
Yeah. So, I mean, we could, we could start looking into them at any point. It would be, I guess, if, in order to make that exercise more fruitful, you know, knowing that, you know, if, if there's a direction that the, the council wants to head in, that, hey, th- these are real options for, for the city, you know, that would, that would help. Because there was, I think they listed, I don't know, maybe 10 different funding options. And some of those could be complex. Some of them I'm not familiar with. And so, you know, digging into each of those and putting stuff together. You know, certainly if it's something that we, we want to pursue, maybe we can stack grants. Maybe we could, maybe we can only apply for one of them type of thing. So, there, there would be lots of questions surrounding what grants? And what's the, what's the probability? And what's the, the funding limit and ability to stack those grants or not? If they're state-funded or federal-funded, or, you know, where those dollars are coming from?
Sherri?
Thank you. Joe, the last report was, I know you kind of brought that up the other night that you sent. Thank you. I mean, I was surprised at how far that plan had actually kind of gone. I mean, it looked, I mean, you had the railroad that was approved, you know, approving it, the city, you know, I mean, it was like it was a go. What was the issue at the end? Why it obviously didn't go through in 2000?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure, except that I know that the township had a particular interest in, in not pursuing it. And that was somewhat evident in the mayor's, Mayor Virginsky's memo to the council that was included in, in there. And I, so I don't know if it was, if that was the primary issue, that they couldn't, couldn't get support and didn't want to push the issue, you know, through the township or not. But ultimately, I think it died at the council level here at the city.
Okay. And that's just, you know, is interesting reading through that. And it's like, you know, if that's, you know, things to consider, if, if they're thinking about, you know, we're thinking about going that way, that it doesn't just directly affect, you know, the city. It affects because it would go, I mean, if you read that, it's going all the way, you know, George Road. So, I mean, it's Town of Port Edwards and, you know, Town of, you know, I mean, it's, it's going way out of the city. So, can't make them do what we want them to do, you know, if we were going that way. So, it's interesting for that. As far as the overpass, underpass, I know you said that because that's a state highway. So, you know, those roads aren't very old, per se. Would the DOT even consider doing any of that? I mean, we're doing A Street. I mean, I'm not talking just about financial, but getting the okay, I guess, to do it or anything like that because it's newer.
I think if there's, if there's a defined need and defined benefits, you know, especially to multiple jurisdictions or agencies, similar to what it was back in 2000 where, you know, the railroad had, they had a desire to reduce their insurance liability. And, you know, of course, the city has, had its reasons, and even the DOT. You know, they were tying it in at that time with the reconstruction of West Grand Avenue and trying to make preparations for that. But, you know, if there was enough need and enough benefit and enough vested interest by multiple parties, that all, that all helps build a case to do that.
And on a financial, I mean, I know it's, it's hard to even say, but we're talking about, you know, 32-point-some million dollars for an overpass, if I'm reading that correctly. I mean, if it's, there's some grant money, obviously, like we talked about. But it'd be interesting to find out, you know, like, what kind of a purchase price we're actually talking about, you know, borrowing. I, I mean, I don't, is it a feasibility, is it feasible? I mean, are we willing to pay that? You know, I.
Yeah. Just, just a comment on that. I guess the, the larger the dollar amount, the, the more, the more unknowns, the larger the scope, the, the more commitment that would be needed to pursue that. More long-term planning and design work. You know, it's just, everything does multiply as the, as the dollars do go up.
And then, getting back to what Ryan was talking about with the predictive mobility. And I know in the report it was saying, you know, if, you know, if we didn't do the big scope projects, if we were to do this or that, if we weren't in the quiet zone. Well, you want to talk of the ratio or whatever that we had to be in in order to qualify for the quiet zone. You know, I think that would be a plus, even if we started with that, to start working in the right direction for the future too, you know.
Joe, being that, you know, with the underpass, overpass option, being that it's a connecting highway, if the states supported this, that's an 80/20 project, isn't it? On a connecting highway?
Yeah. If they, if they supported it and, and ran it through as, as the rest of the connecting highway projects would be, then yes, it, it would likely be an 80/20 cost share unless there was some, because of the uniqueness of the project, if there was some other cost sharing, you know, if, if there were benefits to the, to the railroad that, you know, if, if they were a, a party to that agreement, you know, and, and able to pay or willing to pay because it was a benefit to them, you know, that, that could change some of the, some of the cost share.
And I would think, given that section of the expressway and that intersection, yeah, the Jackson Street part is new, but the rest of it's pretty crumbling. And it's not in good shape. So, I would think that, you know, once A Street is kind of finalized, I would think that would be most likely the next section push from Chase to the north. And so, that could be a viable potential option. And however long we can, or however long it takes for them to designate that as a project because it will definitely need to be a project sooner than later.
Right. Yeah. So, we, we did put together a couple exhibits just to kind of, you know, graphically show what was verbally or, you know, written out in the report on how the, the overpass and, and the underpass would, you know, what the extents might be, you know, based on what they were saying in the report. So, of course, the, the overpass that's shown here, you know, the limits extending almost to 10th Avenue on the west side, on West Grand Avenue, and then to Sixth Avenue on, as you approach City Hall here.
What would be the effects on the businesses along there?
Well, there, yeah, some of the entrances would, would have to, have to go away. You know, in the overpass option, the Ninth Avenue roadway intersection would be closed, as would the, you know, a couple of the businesses immediately west of Ninth Avenue. Their, their driveways would be closed. The YMCA entrance, that would be closed on both, both sides, the expressway and West, West Jackson, West Grand Avenue. On the underpass option, that's a little bit smaller footprint. You know, Ninth Avenue would remain open in that case, as would the YMCA entrance off the expressway. So, there, there would definitely be an impact. But certainly, the underpass, you know, it's, it is a smaller footprint than the overpass would be.
And Joe, kind of going from, with that, with the, the underpass, how do we know the ground condition and all that, that, you know, like, that would even be an option?
Well, it would definitely be a challenge.
That's the biggest thing I could see.
Right. Yeah. There could be hazardous material, other environmental issues, groundwater, other utilities to relocate, bedrock, as with any underground construction. But, yeah, they'd all have to be variables that, that are investigated and identified as part of the preliminary design and, you know, accounted for and dealt with during construction.
What, what kind of plan, like, if we proceeded with, you know, okay, let's say that, that we wanted this an option, and we do whatever, I mean, I, we know A Street, we were on the list for how many years? And we wouldn't know if they were, until we apply with, or contact them, whether it would be approved or not? You know, like, how much money or what work would we have to do to see if they would even, if that would even be an option? Kind of like Mayor was saying, you know, after the A Street project or something that, you know, is it an avenue, I don't want to say a waste, but is it considering, you know, spending all time and effort and money in it, and it's going to be, oh, no?
Yeah. I think it would be probably early on, trying to get discussions going with the DOT and CN, you know, talking about what the issues are and what the the DOT and CN, you know, talking about what the issues are and what the potential options might be, like an overpass or underpass or track relocation, and narrowing in on something that, you know, is, is there a benefit to all parties and, you know, if so, what's, what's the best option, you know, based upon those, those variables? And then, you know, if, if there's, if one kind of floats, one option floats to the top, you know, that's when they would start to dig a little bit deeper into, okay, well, what, what are the costs and what are the other ramifications and, you know, is this, is this going to be a project or, or not? I mean, we, we went through and did some preliminary work on it, of course, with this report, but it's, it's all from, from our, from our vantage point, I guess, you know, it doesn't include CN's perspective or, or the DOT's, of course, but...
Joe, I was actually going to ask you right when you said that last statement, is there anything in here that really, just looking at it from a big picture, that would be a benefit to CN?
Um...
Is there anything they would find positive in anything that was...
Well, the, the overpass or underpass are probably a little bit more negligible on their end, I mean, they, they receive complaints, I think, on a daily basis, you know, all across their networks, the rail network, and since they're federally protected and as long as they're following the, the federal regulations, you know, I guess to say bluntly, I don't, I don't think there's, there's too much emphasis is put on, I mean, they, they were there before a lot of the roads were there and so they've got, they've got the right of way, and, you know, they've got a, a business to run and rail cars and freight to move and, and that's their business, so making sure cars get through timely is, is not, not as much of a concern for them, but, you know, the track relocation, as it was looked at in early 2000s, that, that was a benefit for the railroad at that time, primarily due to their insurance premiums that they were paying, and, but the other options, overpass or underpass, I don't, I don't see that being as, as much of an impact for them.
It was, it was interesting when you're saying that, Joe, in that initial report, I think in 2000, and it's, the total relocation cost four point five million, and then included twenty-six point three acres of land purchase, I mean, that was, that was back in 2000, so I can't imagine what, what that is, but it was interesting how many different stops it would be, would, it would have been eliminated so they could keep on rolling back then, so that was pretty interesting as well, but...
Yeah.
Well, to me, I would be interested in, in getting those answers regardless from CN and, and the DOT on what, if any, plan they would have the most stock in, as far as something that's attainable, and then to build off of that, I think, once, once that is known, I think this decision should be put in the hands of our residents, not just council, I think, in the form of some type of questionnaire at, at election or potentially referendum, because this, this issue affects many residents throughout the city and, you know, for, for that decision to be made on, on just these eight chairs, I, I don't think that gives a realistic picture. I think we all understand as a council, the, the financial issues that our city is encountering, but I don't think, I think that plays more on us than it does our residents, and they may be more willing to, to pay for, for affixed to this issue, more willing than, than what we think.
Sure.
Thank you, I kind of reiterate what Mr. Austin was just saying, it's, it's how much of a buy-in do we want our constituent, you know, the citizens to pay, I mean, what, we all know, we all complain about the railroad and, you know, and the time that's spent trying to cross the tracks, but ultimately, I mean, we're all paying for it, but what kind of buy-in do they want? You know, maybe getting a survey, I mean, like, we did with there, but, you know, what, I suppose it's hard because there's not a dollar amount, per se, of what, you know, what, what it would cost, but it's like, okay, if we started small and did this and then, you know, eventually would build on that, because, I mean, this is going to be not just a project that's going to be done within a, or a decision made quickly, you know, but we could, we could be gone and it could be, you know what I mean, if it's, if it's, it's moving, 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 and a different council comes in, it's like, wait, we, we don't want that anymore, you know what I mean, it's just, I hate to do another, spend more money on more studies and then we don't, and then we don't do anything with it, you know, per se, but I, I don't know what the answer is either, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah. Is there any, would there be any possibility of getting any money out of the federal government for something like this, from the deal that was signed last summer, of how many billions and whatever dollars to, for the infrastructure? I've wondered on that, even with that, would fall in with A Street even to do something with, but I think you all remember a couple of months ago, or a month ago, whatever it was, when the president and then members from both parties were there in Ohio for the bridge that, to replace and that, what a big deal it was because of how much transportation crossed, which amazes me, the number, I couldn't believe it, but the amount of nu, percentage of the GDP that crossed there, so I'm just wondering if there's any chance to go after money like that, interest money from the federal level, people from the Fed, something like this. I just think it's something that'd be worthwhile to look into anyway. Again, we're a small thing that's there, but it'd be, depending, I guess, what we ended up with, it'd be, could potentially be a big job, a job creator, at least in the creation of whatever is done, maybe not number of jobs at the end of the project, that would remain to be seen, but number of jobs created to, to do something would be there, I think. So, it's a, I think, and I don't know offhand what the restrictions were on that type of money, what it'd have to go to, but that would, I think, would definitely fall into the infrastructure of the, of the community to look at something like that, so. So I think, you know, there is money out there, obviously, it's not, it's, I can remember years ago, about grant money and grant money and people, there was always those that were, grant money's not free, somebody's paying for it, it's tax money, so it's just who's paying at the time, but there is that stuff out there, I, you know, and I just wonder if it, if it is available to put in for something like that. And I guess the other question, how many, and maybe it was in there in the report, how many, because I know it has been in the past, but how many times does the chemical plant over there get serviced a week or whatever?
I'm not, I'm not sure that that was in, in the report at all, but I do know that there, they, they still service them.
Yep.
And, you know, that, that's always part of the, part of the concern with looking at track relocation is...
Yep.
That there's still a, a business there that needs to be serviced, and it did reference, the report did reference possibly relocating, maybe out to Rapid East Commerce Center, but, I mean, that's, that's a, it's an option, but it's a kind of whole nother topic to, you know, relocate a business, but nevertheless, it was, it was identified as a, a potential option.
Well, I, I'm not aware of what need there is or what gets serviced there anymore from the railroad, but, because I'm not sure all what goes on where the port mill used to be. So I, I don't even know if there's any rail service that's provided to Port Edwards anymore, per se, there may be, somebody's probably jumping at the, up and down in their chair watching this, as they are and does, that there is, but I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is on that one either, without the mill operating as a paper mill, obviously Nacousa's left. So it's just, what, for the railroad, what is left to service to continue on with the route that they have? Across Grand Avenue, we have that chemical plant, but ba, basically from servicing anything in the city, south, you know, to the south of Grand Avenue, that's the only thing that's there to service, otherwise it's just a train route for the train to go. So, you know, I think, I think there's a number of options to look at, I, I think there's a number of, you know, financing things to look at that we, we don't know what there are, and that's why I just throw out the thing even with the federal government, is there anything with that that would be there? Operating with the, through the state and whatever, which is basically what we do for everything, but maybe there's a chance in, in this case for something else, something grander to look at, and maybe accomplish something sooner than later, take care of the problem. I think basically where we first started out was the, well, congestion was there or whatever, but I think when we got back into this was complaints that we had with the noise that people responding to, with the blowing whistles, so it's, I think that was what got us back into this again. And just, there were a number of people in the surrounding communities that didn't want the train rerouted, I'll just say, didn't want it rerouted, that actually didn't go off by them, that we were shoving, we were shoving our problem to another location. It took care of the loca, the problem here, but it created for people out in the townships, we gave them the problem. So I, you know, I, we're here for info tonight, I think, to learn something for more, it's going to take time to come up with anything, but it's a, I just think there's a number of things to look at into, underpass, overpass is one. To dig down into that is, the unknown of what is there, except it's hard ground, to dynamite your way through, besides whatever spills there may have been, contamination over the years, before things were taken care of. So, you know, I, where we go, I guess I'm willing to listen to what people have to say, but it's, you know, I guess jokingly before, as we were getting started, talking about the overpass or whatever from, to go a long ways, well, the overpass, an overpass would take a long ways anyway, because the tra, train needs a long ways to go up and over, and that's why the underpass would be the easier if it could be done, but, but it's just in my mind too, the chemical plant is what actually, you know, could that be something that could be relocated from where it's at? Obviously, that would cost money from somewhere, but my knowledge, as I'm trying to think quick, like I was saying before, that that's, I think, the only thing that gets serviced on the south side of Grand Avenue, that basically the tracks are there for the trains to go. They may do some switching, I'm not sure what they do over there, but servicing anything, but we do have the big switch, the yard that's up here, you know, if something could be done different with that even too, so the trains could just go. But we're getting longer and longer trains, we're talk, you know, we're looking at hundred car trains, they're a little over, but you look at what the disaster they had in Ohio was, two hundred and twelve or twenty-two, whatever that one was that they had here a month ago, the, with the derailment and that, so, you know, if we start looking at train sizes of that, and I don't know that we will, but if we, if it came to be, you're going to be doubling the tr, double the size of the trains that we got going through now, so. And it's also, it's like the highways, they're packed with them too, but flammable and whatever material that these trains are carrying, I think if we all knew what was going through, we'd be amazed, we all think we have some type of a handle on it, but I think if we knew the amount of, we'd just be amazed at it, I think, it's like the semi-traffic that goes through, we'd be, people would be astounded at what's driving by their, within a block of their house every day, if something would happen, so. Anyway, I think to, you know, to cut this off, for me anyway, for right now, for what I'm saying, it's a, there's a lot to look at, a lot that I think to delve into, but I also, I think with the money part, you know, Matt brought up about the grant money and that, and went to my mind about, is there any, would there be any chance to dip in there, to get into what the Fed has for infrastructure and that, so, thank you.
Matt, did you have something? Patrick?
I have a question for engineering, I just want to know if money wasn't an option, which of these options that you've given here solves the problem of noise and traffic stops, in your opinion?
So, it, it would correspond with, with the recommendation actually in the report as well, that, you know, to solve the delay issue and the noise issue concurrently, it would be a grade separation at West Grand Avenue. Not only does the grade separation get the necessary safety for the quiet zone to just happen, you won't have to do other supplementary safety measures, other infrastructure improvements at other grade crossings, other than, I guess, flashing, flashing lights and gates, but then you, you know, you, you solve the, the primary delay issue in the city, that the vehicles would continue to free flow through there, across that intersection, you know, twelve thousand vehicles a day uninterrupted, and, you know, then the, the railroad could continue to pursue their normal operations as they see is most beneficial to them, and getting the, the delays taken care of and the safety increased.
So by grade separation, you're saying either a overpass or underpass is over here?
Yep.
And of those two, which one?
If I had to make an initial choice today, I'd likely say an underpass, that's where the road would go underneath the, the railroad, and just because of the smaller footprint, the less impact to the businesses, and, yeah, tho, those two are, those two are primary reasons, the footprint and the, and the access.
Are they still going to sound their horns at Chase Street and then down the line? Oh, sorry, it's at Seventeenth that it crosses, I believe?
So if, if there was an underpass, a grade separation at Grand Avenue in a quiet zone implemented, along with flashing lights and gates at Gainer, Seventeenth Avenue and Fremont Street, then it, then you could have a, a quiet zone established all the way from, from Gainer Avenue to... to, all the way up past Fifth Street, you know, on the other side of Bono Avenue. So there would be, I don't know what there is there, three, six, seven, nine crossings that would be within that valley sub quiet zone.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Joe, for putting this together for us.
Certainly.
Thank you, Nick.
I guess next steps, what do you recommend here?
I guess if I were to recommend anything, you know, continuing to have, keep the discussion going, continue to ask questions, we'll get answers. And continue to, you know, start to narrow in on some alternatives that seem to fit the best for the community, even if there's still multiple scenarios, because there's a lot of them listed there. There's a lot of different directions, both in the near future or long term. And so all of those could be identified at some point. And perhaps even getting to a point where some things could just get crossed off the list that, you know, if there's options or alternatives listed there that, hey, we know that this is not an option for the city at this time. You know, a process of elimination might help drive the discussion a bit. But certainly generating questions and getting answers and continuing the conversation here at the least would be a good next step.
So that include reaching out to CN, reaching out to the DOT, trying to understand what, if anything, they would recommend?
Yeah, we could certainly start some preliminary discussions with them and see, just kind of float the idea past them and let them know about the study that was done and remind the current staff that we talked to that, you know, about what was done in early 2000s and see if there's, see how that's received and, you know, if there's further discussions that they might have, you know, both in CN and DOT separately, that, you know, that might help drive some of the discussion for us.
And I guess one more thing, you had mentioned CN not really having a preference or caring about a grade separation at West Grand. But it is noted in the report that, you know, the number of fatalities at that particular crossing is the highest in the city. Wouldn't you feel that that would eliminate that potential for fatalities at that intersection?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I don't want to make it seem that they wouldn't have any interest in it. But compared to a rail relocation, there's a significant difference there. The number of crossings and the safety that they might be increasing in their insurance rates and such with a relocation versus a single crossing. Just wanted to point out the significant difference there.
Anything else? Matt?
So, from Grand Avenue all the way down the expressway, there's a path, there's that path that kind of follows the rail and the rail keeps going and there's woods. Like, if the railroad wasn't there anymore, all that land that is in there from Grand all the way down until wherever, whose land would that be if the railroad tracks weren't there anymore?
Well, in some cases, they, you know, could give it back to the communities that it crosses through. You know, so there's kind of the Rails to Trails program. You know, they vacated rail property that they had and turned it over to local governments and counties and such so they could utilize it for their own purposes, either utility transmission or recreational trails.
I guess my thoughts, this is where my, you know, like say, somebody asked before, if money wasn't the object here, like, to me, not only is it a noise issue and then also, you know, hazardous, but it's also like visually, to me, this is always like, you got this Y now that has gone up and you have things happening further down with, you know, on Grand Avenue, new buildings going up and stuff. But really, that track right there, to me, is like the, I don't know, it's kind of like welcome to the west side. You know, it's just not, it's not pretty. It kind of takes that whole area and says, this is exactly what, you know, you don't want it to be, I guess. So if you could, you know, ultimately, if we had a perfect world, we could take that whole thing out and redevelop that whole, that whole stretch of expressway there. I mean, that would be the ideal. But what we're talking about is if we relocate these tracks to the far side of the city, what we're saying is, I guess I didn't fully understand, is we're going through, we'd have to take houses, like there's a whole swath of territory that we'd have to go through and buy houses and buy land and purchase all that. And that's kind of the biggest inhibitor because we're making a train go through other people's neighborhoods instead of the city. Is that kind of what the holdback is in what happened in 2000?
Yeah, so certainly there is a land takings that would be needed to do a track relocation. I think one of the options that was proposed was to go, you know, to minimize that effort, was to go through a bunch of the county land. But nevertheless, you know, private lands would still be impacted to varying degrees. And, yeah, it complicates things. It's certainly a variable that, especially politically, to make a project like that actually happen.
And right now, I guess I didn't see maps where we'd be talking, but there's nothing there now in terms of railroad tracks that cross through these areas that?
That's correct, yeah.
So that viaduct that go, that leads out of town, is that on Highway 13? Was that built for a purpose? Why does it go up and over? Nothing. You know what I'm talking about?
No, I mean, it was all the, it, right by the paper mill?
No, heading out towards Marshfield.
West Grand.
West Grand.
So they have, they have their, that's their white, they reference the Whitehall sub. They've got their rail lines that come in from the west that use that viaduct to get through.
Trains do come in underneath?
Yep.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
And that's what we would connect to or we'd have to do something completely?
The, one of the options in the report was running it basically on the west corporate limits of the city. I don't know if there, I thought there was an exhibit in here that kind of showed the route.
But that's the one that's going by George Road, right?
Yeah, where, you know, it would run along the west corporate limits and then it would tie back into that Whitehall sub line underneath the viaduct. And so it would take the line that comes up from Nacousa and Port Edwards and route it through the viaduct that the other rail line's currently using.
And that's all CN?
Yep.
Okay. So there's the, I don't remember, but somewhere, you know, in that 23 to 33 million dollars, does that include a rough estimate of what it would take to purchase those properties?
Yeah, there was, there were some assumptions made in there and it is part of the cost estimate that's proposed.
I mean, ultimately, that would be the, in my opinion, that's the best way to go for the west side in terms of cleaning everything up in one fell swoop and making it part of the city again instead of a, to me, it's a, yeah, a little bit of a cutoff there. And the amount of development that could happen on that whole stretch would be, you know, pretty awesome. There's a lot of stuff that's there outside of the chemical plant. And again, it's tough to think, and I understand this, being a business owner, but to think one business, if it is possible to do something like this, there's got to be a solution for the one business that would hold it up to make sure they can still get their product to the rail. Thank you.
Shane?
I kind of agree with you, Matt, but I think probably the bigger issue is the private property that it affect over there. And that's where I think a bulk of the holdup probably was in 2000 is the property owners didn't want to part with their property or have rail go through it. But I think a couple of days ago, I had received from our, I forwarded to you, Joe, or from our federal legislator, that they can choose or they can have projects that they can put in for earmarks. And there's a lot of criterias, but it's got to have a federal nexus to it. But one of the, and I was just looking at, one of the, let me find it here. One of the things was the transit infrastructure projects or consolidated railroad infrastructure and safety improvements. And so this next one is due in a few weeks, but maybe that's what we need to spend the next year doing is working with DOT, getting, because you're going to have to put together a pretty detailed package. And maybe that's something we submit as a city, to try to get a project earmarked from the federal government under one of those standards. And maybe working with DOT on that, maybe we might be able to put together a project that's appealing, that they would choose to appropriate funds to do here in Wisconsin. But we'd have to do it next year, but it'd give us a year to work on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you again, and very informative. We appreciate it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 6:04.